We call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, June 4th, 2018, 6:30 PM. All members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, our president, Laura Belgen, our city manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2018. I would then entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 21st.
A motion to be made, is there a second?
There's a second.
Made and seconded. Discussion on the minutes. Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item, comments by members of the public. I don't see anything this evening. Then we will move on. The next item will be NAK Stan Strong event request.
Hi guys. So, in your packet you found the event application for NAK Stan Strong. They're doing their second annual overdose awareness memorial walk. That's scheduled for this Sunday, not Saturday. You know, it's a Saturday, it's actually Sunday. And Tara is here to give you a little bit of information about the event. So, I'll give you the details. Hi, I'm Tara Patton, this is Travis. We are part of the NAK Stan Strong doing the second annual opioid awareness memorial walk. So, we did it last year, we had about 100 people. This year we have guest speaker Brendan Novak's coming up, and then some local speakers, Travis and a few other people. And we are asking to waive the rental fee for the gazebo for that day. I mean, they did pay their $25 deposit with their application, which of course is required for everyone. And you'll also notice in their letter that they talked about their future. They're hoping to continue doing this awareness walk. And they also mentioned that they're working on getting donations or fees for this that will help cover the rental next year. So, they're working on a path to being self-sustainable. I really like that about their application. They have given that some thought.
(coughs)
It's good for you.
Sorry. I knew that was coming. I knew that was coming. Okay. So, they filled out the event application, and they went through... Have you reviewed anything with them? And the application is complete?
Yep, and this is the second year that they've done this. It's hosted on a Sunday, which is great because it won't, you know, impact the farmers market, which is supposed to be theirs well, so that's good. And they completed all the requirements, so...
Mm-hmm. And so, just some of the considerations that the council considers with every event. The event takes place within Newport City. It's compatible with compliments and is not in competition with events hosted by the city. The event is open to the public, accessible to Newport City residents, and provides a service, and it does not... Services in nondiscriminatory manner. Definitely does that.
Absolutely.
The majority of fundraising, charity or fundraising events are used to support specific programs or services that benefit Newport City residents. That I would say yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that I would say. The event or organization is addressing a recognized community need.
That's a definite.
That's a definite, we know that. There is a substantial return on investment measured by economic impact or other tangible benefits associated with the partnership. That one, I mean, the benefit, I mean, it may not be monetarily, but if we can get anyone off... I look at it, we get anyone off opioids, we get them as a... That to me is a benefit to the community. And so, that's how I look at that criteria right there. And then, the event organizers experience qualifications and responsiveness, responsiveness promote a positive working relationship with the city. You worked with...
Yep, and they were great in the past. They didn't leave a mess or anything like that, so their track record is good.
We don't have SIR this year, but Jennifer Harlow said that Royce Lancaster and Dave Jacobs will help with traffic, just people crossing. We have, in the packet, we have the map where we walk. It's the same as last year. I guess SIR doesn't... They don't do it anymore.
Yeah, SIR is dissolved.
SIR is dissolved?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
They're volunteers, yeah.
Oh, wow. So, you actually, okay, you started the gazebo, and then you cross and walk along the pipe path?
We come right up here, down to the water, and back around.
Okay, that's what you did. Same as last year, then.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and this was not required as part of their application, because on her application they had anticipated number of people, it was 50 to 75.
Right.
So, it's not technically considered a large event when they need council approval. This is a typical rental. The only reason they're here tonight is to request those waived fees.
The waived fees.
So, I appreciate you submitting this. If your event starts to grow, there'll be another portion that we have to consider for next year. So, just keep that in mind.
Okay. Okay. Were there any questions from council members? None of us? Then, does the council wish the fee was, what, $95? Do we wish to... What was your pleasure as far as the fee?
I would be pleased to make a motion to waive that fee.
The motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Once again, just account for it, Laura, in the special line item that we had designated the other fees.
So, this will come out of council special projects and not in $95?
Yes, the $95. Just so that we can keep an accounting, so we know in the future and the budget. Okay, anything else? Then, yes?
Yes, I'm only interested in the accounting part, and also how we're using Jessie's time. With regard to the accounting part, when Jessie and Laura first put in the budget for this year and the next year, she had to envision, before this events policy went into effect, that there would be events, and that the recreation department would swallow its portion of those events, because that was in the budget already. So, last year's budget, which we're still coming up to until June 30th, and next year's budget, which is already approved, she put in a budget that included taking care of events. Now, I would say, for the next time a budget is arranged, that may be true, that we have to renegotiate this, but right now, you should not be taking money from special projects and paying Jess back, the rec department back, because that was already included in what she wanted. She had to envision there would be events, and that it would cost something to clean up the park, or do whatever it is. So, number one, we should not be doing this accounting until, not this year, not next year, which the budget is already in for, but the following year. Otherwise, you're double dipping. And who's going to pay for this in the end? We are. The city's going to pay. She's getting... I'm sorry, the citizens are going to pay for this, because the rec department isn't going to ask for any less money, and a special fund is going to need more money to pay everybody back eventually, for this year and next year. And you can figure it out for the following year when the new budget comes. But the second thing I want to point out with regard to this is, is this the way we want to spend Jess's time? Or did we want to spend it making programs for the children? She doesn't have... Look at all the hours she now has to spend talking to the events people, helping them fill out the form, seeing whether or not the seven elements of whether or not they shouldn't have some fee waived are met. And then, it's taking a lot more time with you guys, too, to decide whether or not... I mean, this is city council time, in addition to listening to me. So, I'm saying you're wasting Jessie's time, it should be better put to other purposes. And two, this budget fudging that you're doing is just going to cost us more money for the next two years for no reason whatsoever. It was already in there.
It was not in the budget.
Yes.
That's what I want to say. It was not in the budget to waive fees. Her event programming is rec department events. It wasn't the cost of all these other programming.
How was it paid for? Previously?
It was coming out of her budget in the past.
Yeah, always.
So, now, I'm doing... I wanted an accounting tracking, and that's all it is, is a tracking of the account. It's so that we can know in future years what we're waiving for fees. It's just an accounting. It's not going to affect the bottom budget taxpayers. The budget's already been approved, the money's been collected. This is just an accounting within the budget to track it. And so, that's what I wanted.
We have an obligation to let the taxpayers know how their resources and funds are being spent, and this is how we're doing it. We did it last year. What was different last year is that we didn't have any account to take it out of. It was a hit to the rec department, or the public works department, or the police department. Now, we're accounting for these in a much more fair and equitable way. When it comes time to do the budget next year, all of these figures will be taken into consideration by the council, and you'll have even better data to make your decisions. Regarding spending Jess's time, with events coming forward, they need to be coached and guided. You can't have people come forward who have never done this before and not realizing the magnitude of what the impacts are of the requests. We're providing a service by doing this. Otherwise, you'll be surprised. You'll have unanticipated expenses, you'll have things that need to be taken care of that were not previously addressed. So, as long as people want to do events and they're on city property, we have a responsibility to make sure there is a proactive plan and a cleanup plan and accountability after that. Otherwise, we're going to be run amok.
And you've been doing paperwork for the last few years anyway.
And this actually simplifies and streamlines things, Lori, and makes it a little bit more efficient. The better we get at this process, the more we practice it, the smoother it goes, and it's actually easier for me to do that.
Right.
And the other thing I want to remind everyone is that it's really difficult to think about this... A lot of people were thinking about this as an expense thing. It's not the rec department having to spend money on, you know, the trash and the bathroom impact. Those things cost money, for the most part. We're doing them already. There is a little bit additional impact, but the issue is the missed revenue. So, if the rec department wants to continue to advance recreation in Newport, whether it means buy a playground, or adding programs back in, which means adding staff members or manpower to the rec department, to get all those things back that the community really wants, we have to have the money come from somewhere. And if it's not coming from the taxpayers, which would be how we would supplement that, we are trying to charge the users for their parked use. So, we're looking at this as missed revenue, not a hit to the expense line. It's actually missed revenue, which will then help our expense line. So, it's a little bit backwards, but I'm going to have to think about it that way.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item is authorization to file a DDC grant application. This is a grant for, let's see, $6,000 that will go towards a hydrocedar that is basically being required of municipalities, correct Laura?
Yep.
And then, let you do a little explanation.
I gave you the...
Right.
Can you read that, please?
Just read this email? Okay, that'll do it? Okay. The grant application is for a hydrocedar. A hydrocedar shoots out lightened seed fertilizer, and it helps grow in a short amount of time. This is needed as a result of requirements for best management practices around the state, criteria for stormwater. The grant is the A&R and is a maximum of 6,000. It requires an 80% match. This is a piece of equipment that will be heavily used. So, it's basically, what I was trying to get at was, it's a result of a whole storm... New stormwater regulations, when you have road maintenance or construction, they want it to be vegetated as quickly as possible, and so... Questions? Does he have a chance to review everything?
Yeah.
So, on here, they'll reimburse up to $5,200, right? So, if we have a 20% in kind...
Is it up to $5,200 or is it up to $6,000?
Maximum reimbursement.
$5,200, okay.
So, that means that we took 10% of that, right? 20%? Does that put us up to the $6,000 amount? Is the $6,000 amount a fixed cost that we already know that somebody's going to pay? Are we looking at the other portion?
Maximum reimbursement.
That's for that piece of equipment.
Okay, so $5,200. I think he thinks a price of one is going to be in the $6,800 range, and his vantage point is, even if he has to spend between $1,200 and $1,500, it's still a tremendous advantage for him.
See, I was looking at this as if we really aren't applying for a piece of equipment yet, that we could apply for any one of these pieces of equipment.
Right now, that's the one he's focusing on. I think there is a trajectory and a logistical outlay. He's working with MWA on this effort as well, so that's where their planning is brought from at this point.
Now, my understanding is this equipment has to be used specifically to mitigate runoff from the roadways and stuff that are adjacent to waterways. So, when I look at it, the waterways that I see that are adjacent to, you know, Proudie Bay, on the Glen Road, I wish it was here, because I'm wondering if that includes Ferm Street and School Street, Inman, which actually, the runoff comes down onto the Glen Road and into the lake, or if it just has to be adjacent. But I got the impression that, at this point, you're not asking for a specific piece of equipment yet. I think there's another application for that, right? This is just authorizing that we're interested in it.
This is authorizing his... You're granting him authority to apply for a grant for purchasing a hydrocedar?
Yes.
Or any piece of equipment there, but his focus is hydrocedar.
Correct.
Oh, right, because it's the other equipment, but he wants the hydrocedar.
Right.
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying, right.
This is just authorizing him to say, to apply for that, which is really a different application.
Right, but you're right. There was other equipment. I focused on what he highlighted, the hydrocedar. Minus setting of the storm on clean water would probably involve Ferm Street, because the way they're focusing on the entire...
They're looking at stormwater runoff.
They're looking at stormwater, basically, and that would involve Ferm.
And now, if you look up at Lake Chinplaine, and in our lake especially, the biggest problem in our lake is phosphorus, and that comes from the farms, and it can also come from our treatment plant. If our treatment plant overflow reserve puts certain...
Actually, the studies have shown that treatment plants in the entire state of Hamon is only about 1% of the entire... So, treatment plants, I think it's 1% or 1.5%, if I remember the figures. So, treatment plants are like one of the smallest...
I think there is, but it's still by some...
True, but it's one of the smallest as far as adverse impact. It's more likely what's coming into the lake from the watershed, which is... We're a very small, small part of that, but... So, we would need a motion for this.
I will make a motion to approve the application for the roads grant in aid program, equipment purchase.
A motion to be made, is there a second?
On second.
Made and seconded, discussion?
Yes. Are we currently enrolled in this program for any other in-house equipment?
I would assume that you apply for it as the opportunities come up. What do you mean enrolled in the program?
Well, this is a program, this grant made program by equipment like this. Is there any other equipment that we've bought in the past that's been attributed to this program?
This is brand new.
This is all part of the stormwater runoff initiative, and I think that A&R is enrolling that, because from what I gather, it's a relatively new initiative, it's very expensive, and they're trying to come up with ways to meet the demands that are put on municipal roads.
Hasn't there been a program like similar to this in the past, where we've gotten equipment?
We very well could have. I don't know if it's this exact program.
But didn't have the same, okay.
I don't know.
Well, municipal roads have been around for a long time. Municipal road grant. But this one's focusing on clean water and stormwater mitigation. But, yeah, municipal road grants, that's been around for quite a long time, the municipal road act. Karen?
And probably you're thinking as well of the USDA community facilities grants that have purchased equipment for the city, so those you have received.
Yeah, that's separate from this.
Correct.
Anything else? Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes have it. Motion carries. So, Laura, we all need to sign, right?
Yes, indeed.
Get back to... He doesn't need to... He didn't need to sign anything, certify it or anything, so just...
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is Northern Borders application update. Correct resolution, and we have Karen Garrity.
So, as you recall, we met a few weeks ago to discuss the application for the Northern Borders Regional Commission grant to do repairs on the boardwalk. And Laura's going to pull up a PowerPoint, so we go through this. The application is then submitted, but it's incorrect in that the Northern Borders grant requirement requires that you own the piece of infrastructure that you're applying the money to. So, yeah, that's probably a big time shift, a second to combine. And is there a way I can click through it? Or you can tell me? Yeah, there we go. So, of course, as you know, what we're talking about is this boardwalk piece here, the infrastructure that was built some years ago, and was priced out, and we'll look at the prices in a few minutes, for repairs in 2009. It's a pretty extensive renovation. There's several meaningful repairs that need to be done. So, the Northern Borders grant allows for an application up to a half a million dollars for a piece of infrastructure like this. So, the next slide. So, for an eligible purpose, we applied for this as a piece of transportation infrastructure, and which is one of the eligible uses for this grant application. Now, there was a question that came from the committee as whether or not it could be considered a transportation piece of infrastructure. If it wasn't transportation, we would only be eligible for $250,000. But, the next slide will show how we define this. You'll see that their rationale that it might not be a piece of transportation infrastructure was that, as you see from the orange dots, there is a recreational path that parallels the boardwalk. The boardwalk is the green dots that you see there. What we pointed out was if you follow the orange dots, they lead you directly into four lanes of traffic, right there on the sidewalk that empties out, and then you cross a railway track, and you're sitting between two active railway lines on your bike with your children before you enter the bike path again, going north. So, we argued that the actual path that could be used for bikes and pedestrians really should be that boardwalk path, because it keeps you out of traffic, and it is a better transportation option for bikers and pedestrians. You still have an issue with the tracks, but you can overcome that when you're crossing that body of water, but it is a secure location. But it's not the same as being emptied out into really four lanes of traffic on a narrow sidewalk, and then making that sharp left onto a railway track. So, they agreed with that. So, we are defining, this boardwalk project is defined as a piece of infrastructure. So, we are eligible for up to the half a million dollars. The next slide. So, this is where it says in the eligible purpose, is that grant recipients, in this instance, would be the city as the applicant, must maintain ownership slash control over all investments made with NBRC funds. What control means is, if you are the owner of this piece of infrastructure, you can lease it as long as you maintain control of it, but effectively, you have to be the owner. If you're applying for the grant, at the end product, you have to be the owner of this. So, what was not apparently understood at the beginning of the process was that the state was offering ownership of the boardwalk to the city. They are going to gift the boardwalk to the city, and what that does in this situation, because the grant requires a match, so you can imagine a match of a half a million dollar grant, it's at least a 20% match of $100,000. But the value of the boardwalk will count as the match, because it's worth far more than $100,000. So, in terms of cost to get the repairs done, there would be no cost to the city under this scenario. You receive the grant for the repairs, and the match in receiving the gift from the state will cover the match that the city would have to put in. So, the next issue is, I think, I need the next slide. So, what we've done is, we went to get the estimates. So, what you're looking at on the left-hand side are the 2009 estimates of what the repairs would be, which was just a little under $300,000. We just received the update to pretty much the same repairs, and it's now up to $404,000. So, that's effectively the cost of the repairs as it's sitting right now. And you can really see, when you go through the line items, it's really the settlement repairs where there's been a significant rise in cost. So, shoreline stabilization as well, that's gone up substantially. And, you know, depending on what happens with the tariffs, you know, we can only get quotes 10 days out now for steel and things like that, so... But it will be within this ballpark, and certainly, the grant of a half a million will more than cover this. So, those are effectively what... And I'm happy to send this list to anybody who'd be happy to see it, as well as the 2009 one, just for comparison. But this is effectively the estimated cost for the repairs. So, the next slide. So, just to point out, we were in a conversation today with the Vermont Land Trust board directors, with Jess and Andy Capello, and talking about the future of the developments in Newport, around the Bluffside Farm, around Norwood Lake, and the potential for adding value to the downtown by owning this particular, by having the city own the boardwalk. And you can see in the yellow there, to the left, is where the city boardwalk would be. On the right, in the red, that is where the proposed location of the bridge from Proudie Beach over the Bluffside Farm is. And as we talk about that, and we talk about this, the harbor master has talked in depth about the mooring fields that are available in this lake that have already been approved. We need landing locations for smaller boatcraft. So, we would look at that bridge over on the Bluffside Farm. Again, that's a separate project, also funded by Northern Borders, but we would look at putting in small docking facilities off of that bridge as well. But what we might want to consider doing, because we will have the funds to do it if this is approved, is on the next slide here, Laura. So, your harbor master has started to look and assess the lakefront for possibilities for additional development. And in looking at the waterfront boardwalk, we could look at installing floating piers for small craft rental and an access ramp. And so, when you think about, we'll have the costs met for the repairs of the boardwalk, we'll have those costs met by the... We'll have those costs met by the grant and the match of the grant. But what we're gonna wanna do is set up some new revenue streams going forward that will cover the cost of maintenance for this structure going forward. We have the opportunity, I think, and certainly the Harbor Master is just brimming with ideas on how to develop some small businesses along this lakefront that can really support a waterfront economy and look at developing a funding source, a revenue stream that will support really the cost of maintaining this going forward. So because I know that's always been an issue, is not only the cost of repairs to the boardwalk coming on the taxpayer, which certainly none of us want, but also the maintenance of it, like any other piece of equipment or any other facility that the city maintains as a recreational facility. So the issue before us at this point is that the resolution that you cast for the application of the Northern Borders Fund is insufficient because it only refers to repairs to the boardwalk. It has to be a resolution that includes the acquisition and repairs of the boardwalk. So it has to include a statement by the council that the city is willing to acquire the boardwalk. Now, the acquisition piece would not come for a bit because the grant would be awarded. There's some paperwork and things that need to happen, you know, through October. And then the acquisition piece doesn't happen until the notice to proceed is issued by the Northern Borders Commission.
And I also think, right, but also there has to be, I think, legislative action, correct?
From the state.
From the state, the legislature, next session would have to, I'm assuming they would have some sort of resolution.
It would have to be some sort. So it's not like the acquisition, when you make this resolution, it's not like you acquire it tomorrow. You will acquire it before the end of the grant so that you show that match for the grant. And we would certainly look very careful at the timing of that gift so that the value of the match is coming in at the right time as the grant funds are being expended. You have to, you have to watch how you're spending and have a sufficient match against what you're expending. But, you know, if you approve of this, we would certainly work with the state on that and they would work with you on that as well. So that's sort of where we are with this at the moment. It's a big consideration.
Is there more slides?
I don't think so. I think that's it.
Some history, I guess that slide can show it. When they first built the boardwalk, see the two gazebos, that had to be repaired already.
Yep.
And that hasn't even moved since they fixed it. They brought in, it was the same engineering company that did the update.
Yep.
They did all that, Borne Engineering. And so the repairs to that, I mean, it's not even moving. The problem with the whole thing is they didn't go to, I call it right of refusal or bedrock. That's the thing, they didn't go to bedrock. And that's what the engineer, when I had the chat with him to get you all the information, said that's what happened originally, is they didn't go.
So.
So I call it right of refusal or whatever, a bedrock.
You go back to this slide that shows the side-by-side comparisons. That's where you see, under the settlement repairs, that's where you begin to see the vertical piling replacement. That's where you see the cost jump from $48,000 to $62,400. That's really where a lot of your cost is coming in, so that they can get that really firm.
Yeah.
So given, I just would like to say, given that we're in the process of doing research with the V H B group on waterfront infrastructure to connect Main Street better to the waterfront, this is kind of an opportunity that's fallen into our laps by virtue of the state reaching out saying this is a possibility for us if the city is willing to take the boardwalk as a gift. The Northern Borders Fund only applies to the six northern counties of Vermont, New Hampshire, Maine. But there's a fund for Vermont this year. Next year, the Northern Borders Fund will go statewide. So it will be a far more competitive fund. We anticipate a lot of that money going into Lake Champlain because of the need there. So it's a, we're positioned in a good place. If ever there was a time to consider this, to acquire it with the repairs done under the grant, with the match being the value for the grant, and then a lead time to really cultivate both business and revenue streams to support it, this would be the time because it's fitting into all of this resurgence of the lakefront activity that we're seeing.
So that would be that last slide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to look at?
No, that's good. I think this also, yeah, that's okay, will allow people to not have to go through the state. They'd come to the city if they want an event on there, but it'd be a lot easier
That's right.
to have activity on the actual boardwalk because you would be dealing with the city versus the state and they have a lot more restrictions, a lot more than what we do.
Exactly. Yeah, it opens it up in terms of events to many more possibilities than the state can provide because it's your local ownership of that property, so.
Mr. Schlemmer. Why was there such a decrease in the contract utilization, $10,000 per year?
Yeah, I wondered about that too. I can certainly ask. I just actually got this today. But I couldn't ask about that. I think they're trying to keep it within a ballpark figure for us, but it's a very good question. I did see a couple of other areas that I was gonna ask him about.
Yeah.
You know, now they're required with a railroad flagger for $16,000 and that wasn't in there before. Not that we wouldn't wanna have one, but it's just a few additional things.
Other questions from councilmembers?
So we gave a motion to.
Approve, it would be the new resolution that we had in that pack.
Great. This is all really wonderful news.
I think now is the time to apply because, I mean, like you were saying, when they open that up statewide, it's, it's gonna, I have a feeling that Lake Champlain will be priority over, over us and. Yeah, there was confusion in the beginning with this whole, I mean, I was under the impression, I was, well, actually Laura and I, Laura, when we left the governor's office, we were in the impression it wasn't ownership at the time and that was the whole clarification.
And I know where that comes from is that you can't, you can't take ownership until you get the notice to proceed.
Right.
So the ownership is delayed, but it has to, when the grant goes in, there has to be the explicit intent to acquire it. And that's the piece that was missing.
And that was the confusion that I think.
That was the confusion. But it was presented to the council as a repair.
Right, because that was my impression too.
As a repair grant. And that needed to come back as, no, it has to be acquisition and repair.
And that was confusion, not my part.
The other piece to clarify is that it's a $500,000 grant, not a $250,000 grant. So when Jim keeps the minutes, he'll note those changes in the minutes. And the resolution wording is the exact same one that you signed before I changed the dates. And I can see something else that I need to change on this one, which is at the city council meeting held on May 21st, that should say June 4th. But, so that's how this will work. It's just like the other one, but I can go print out another one really fast and put the correct date on.
If you wanna do that.
Does yours say May 21st at the bottom?
Yes.
Let me just fix that.
The beauty of this, if you decide to take it out, it really does fit within this development of the recreational economy for Newport. Your Harbor Master has some really terrific ideas about utilizing that piece. He was explaining today about the types of boats coming in, the fact that we have to have a place for boats to really unload sewage, depending on where they are. There's opportunities to sort of take these pieces of construction, both at Bluffside and the boardwalk, and tweak it so that you don't have as much of a load on the public dock that we have currently. You have far more usage that can come, the more we open it up.
But it opens up the gazebos much to people who might wanna.
Yep.
Have musical events even beyond Wednesdays in the waterfront and this.
So when you have this summer leasing the green space, you then potentially, you know, in future years, you have the green space and you own the boardwalk for larger events and other things. So, you know, it's something to think about.
And the annual maintenance, the original thing here included all that green space. The state does not want to turn, I mean.
Right, they have to maintain the green space.
Right, the annual maintenance would be less than what the estimates were.
So in that.
Should be in theory, less than what, because the original estimates, when I know this came up a few years ago for the boardwalk and included all that green space.
And those estimates in the 2009 study were a little over, I think they were a little over $23,000. But that included all the green space. This would not.
Right.
And I'm working to get those figures from B G S.
I mean, there's a little bit down past, between the gazebo and the dock, there's a little green space, but not much, especially.
But those, those maintenance figures are within a reasonable amount that as we develop a revenue stream should be covered. And this is part of the work, you know, as we get another person in the community who'll be working on the recreational economy, this is part of the work to set up businesses and other opportunities to generate these kind of revenue streams so that we're not looking at taxpayer money to do everything, so.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
And we were talking like the grant is guaranteed. Are there other people applying for this grant?
Oh, yes. It's a very competitive grant.
So it really isn't guaranteed, right?
No, no, it's not guaranteed.
So when, if the legislature gifts us the property, can we make, can we make that contingent on the grant?
Well, no, they already know, I mean, my meeting, I can tell you, my meeting with the governor basically flat out said that I don't want any local taxpayer money going to repair it. And he knows very clearly that if we don't receive this grant, we're not accepting the boardwalk.
So it's, yes, it's a good point. The actual gift could not be made until the grant is awarded and the notice to proceed goes forward. So you're right, you're covered because without the grant, there's no way to manage those repairs.
That's good to hear. Yeah, Laura, you talk about all these other facilities. Almost all the land is public along the waterfront over at the. Are we going to try to create things that's gonna take business away from the marina and existing businesses?
I think this will actually draw business, draw more business in. And I wish the Harbor Master was here to talk because he spoke this afternoon quite eloquently about, you know, what the potential is for drawing in different kinds of watercraft. So, and also setting up business for rentals down in that waterfront.
Well, one example is the Palmer family's gonna be installing two docks this week along the seasonal walking path. Yeah, and one of those is for short-term stopping so boats can come in and shop for their essentials and leave. And the other one is more for public access until enough Nathan at the great outdoors to allow his customers to test drive his equipment.
Yeah.
So that's the model that we're, we're looking for.
Other questions from anyone?
Any idea how much revenue could be generated from the mooring stuff?
Jim has some ideas, but his, I say but because he has a phased plan. And I think if he was fully phased in, and that would take several years at our current rates, I mean, he's done some analysis. It would, it would more than cover what we expect would be our costs in maintaining that. I hesitate to say any numbers. He would be the person to do that. So his, his overall concept is to increase the number of what he calls transient moorings. And that would be in front of, between the gateway and the pavilion. And I believe there is a little more room by the boardwalk, although not a lot because that's part of the fairway. There is an approved mooring field over near the Bluffside Farm. And that was why we had included the Bluffside Farm in our initial discussions about this because we thought there was opportunity for them as well. But again, we're talking phased in.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're looking at opening up access to the water for everybody. And that was actually one of the criteria of Vermont Health and Conservation Board's funds that we accepted. So all of this effort in the Bluffside Farm is to, is to find new innovative and entrepreneurial ways to take advantage of our waterfront.
You know, I, I was involved with the mooring management years and years ago. And one of my problems is the city of Newport is lake poor. And really, the mooring management plan that finally came out turns the lake that's in Newport into a parking lot. And it doesn't provide local access anymore. It's just a parking lot for people to park their boats. And if you wanna use the lake, you've gotta leave the waters and pretty much you've gotta go to Canada and use the lake. It eliminates the fishing that people do along the shores. So I think we have to be careful when we say we've got all these places where boats can moor and we wanna moor more boats. And if you went and you looked at Waimipisaki, one of the battles they've been having is eliminating these moorings so people have access to their lake. So I hate to see what little lake we have within the city limits turn into a parking lot for boats.
Well, right now you don't have access to the lakes and turning it into a parking lot seems like an extreme analogy.
If you look, if you look at the mooring management plan and you look where they put them.
We're not looking at turning it into a parking lot. We're looking at gaining access so more people can use it and we're looking at enhancing entrepreneurial experiences.
I have a different opinion.
Okay, anything else? Then we would need a motion to approve this resolution if the council so chooses.
I'll make that motion.
A motion's been made. Is there a second? The motion may be seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve the resolution? Then, Mr. Mayor? Yes?
I just have a question. If the city, if you get your grant and you get the boardwalk, the green space is not going to be included? So then states still can limit access to vendors on their portion?
They can. Right now, the city's also leasing the green space this summer. So while I can't speak to what the intent is, the overall intent for the state is to have this piece of property more usable for the city because they recognize the value for both the waterfront and for the community. So this summer, the city is able to lease that property for four months, the green space, from June 1st through September 30th. So anyone who wants to do events on that space or enjoy it goes to the city, not the state. This is an acquisition piece for the boardwalk. Whether there would be an acquisition piece for the green space in the future, it's certainly a question that could come up.
One follow-up. How much is it costing us for the four months round?
$2,000.
But it's costing N C R C.
Yeah, the downtown organization is putting that up.
That's all us what they originally wanted. They wanted Lake, they wanted, was it, they wanted Lake Champlain rates and we said this isn't Lake Champlain. They wanted, I think, $1,500 a month versus $500 and we said, wait, this is Newport. And so they dropped it way down. And so, any other questions then? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, I guess.
I said aye. You can look at me again.
Well, no, 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 I just, I didn't, did you say aye?
I said aye.
Okay, I, I was just trying to, it seemed an awful quiet aye.
I considered aye. It's a good point.
I didn't continue.
Good, so we'll let the, we'll make an amendment to the application with the new resolution.
And it doesn't mean we're gonna receive the grant?
Doesn't. It looks, looks good, but it doesn't mean we'll receive it. Certainly a very competitive application.
Just put it in and stress again, everyone knows if you don't, if it's not fixed, we're not taking it.
It's nothing to the taxpayer. Thank you all very much.
That's.
Thank you.
What? Thank you too. Can I get a back?
I said we gotta get you to start on the right.
Oh, well, I just go the president and whatever. I don't know. I can go that way.
Would be more efficient.
I guess, but I just do it the way I do it. Hey.
More, more paper.
Thank you.
More paper. Okay, the next one is the fair housing policy. We really do not need to have any vote on this because there's no change to the resolution. It was listed by mistake. It was listed as needing to be updated and it did not need to be updated. So the policy that is in effect as of what was the date on the, is still in effect. So we don't even need to have a vote or anything on it. So we don't even need to have a vote or anything on it. Like it was 2,000?
Yeah.
And so, so I just wanted to have that. Since we said we were going to have it on this agenda, we don't have to change anything regarding that. The next item would be new business. Mr. Johnson? Mr. Charval?
No.
There's your woman?
No.
I don't have, Mr. Schlempf?
Yes, on Block Road where the city repaired a hook and pipe, there are pools that are starting again and hot homes need to be filled.
It's free to call me anytime.
Okay.
And I can do that, so, so these types of things in the address.
Okay. That's it. Anything new? Any new business?
No, thank you.
Old business, Mr. Johnson?
Nope.
Mr. Charval?
Nope.
There's your woman? Um, the only old business, I guess, could have been due old, is the, we received a budget update for. I had a couple of questions. It's more on, I guess it was on the revenue side. We hadn't received anything from corrections as far as pilot. Is that due in?
I haven't built them yet.
You haven't built them yet? Oh, okay, I was just curious on that. And then what's the state municipal tax adjustment? I don't think I've seen that before. Has it been there?
It's got something to do with homestead.
Is that the homestead? Okay. I was just curious because we hadn't budgeted anything and all of a sudden it's. What's that?
We don't, we don't want to get any.
We don't want to get any, it's just, oh, okay. I was just, that's all I had. I was just curious on it. Did you have questions, Mr. Schlempf, on the budget?
No, well, mine's very minor. I can adjust mine there.
Oh, okay. All right. That's all I have. Any old business?
No.
Any old business? Anything?
No, thank you.
All right. The next council meeting will be Monday, June 18th, 6:30 P M. And the next Centennial Planning Committee meeting will be June 7th at 5:00 P M. And we need a motion to adjourn at 7:25. Motion made, is there a second?
All seconded.
Seconded, discussion that.
Please complain him.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion. Is that you?